We are live via Zoom. We're streaming live on YouTube, which you I suppose can tell if you're watching me right now. If you have public comment that you'd like to offer, you can send it to publiccomment@radnor.org and it will be read into the record. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Starting with public participation, we have at least one email that I've received. This is from Nancy Crawford at Surrey Services, who writes, "As an employee of Surrey Services, I hear every day from people the incredible impact our organization has made on them and how grateful they are. The impact Surrey provides relies on financial support from special entities like Radnor Township to fund transportation, food, and socialization for many wonderful seniors. Here are two examples of ways Surrey staff and volunteers have been able to improve the quality of life by taking the fear of isolation and hunger away from two Radnor residents. Although the names have been changed, you may recognize someone you know in similar straits. Surrey will be glad to help them." Nancy, age 82, has been a member of Surrey since 2003. Her biggest pleasure was singing in the chorus at Surrey that met every week and put on performances several times a year. When she was no longer able to drive, Surrey Transportation stepped in each week to get her to the center for practice. Then her son was diagnosed with cancer. He moved in with Nancy so she could manage his care. However, between medical bills and the rising cost of living against her fixed income, she had to choose between food and paying the bills. She said, "I never thought I would be in this position where we don't have enough money to eat. It is a terrible feeling." Even though she was very embarrassed by her situation, she did share it with Anne Sprissler, with the accompanist for the chorus. Anne told her to call Surrey to join the Grab and Go Food Delivery Program. Nancy was immediately added to the program and is getting two hot meals and extra groceries each week. This program is free thanks to the support Surrey receives. Surrey has an amazing group of volunteers. One of our younger volunteers took over grocery shopping for another Radnor resident, Anne. Anne is a low-income, legally blind elderly member who has formed a special bond with her volunteer. Grocery shopping turned into running errands, tech support for her cellphone, which is her lifeline, check-in calls just to chat, and even a home haircut, a first for the volunteer. All these actions by the volunteer have helped Anne relieve the loneliness that comes with isolation and allows her to remain independent and safe in her home. Our foundation of neighbor helping neighbor continues to flourish between these two. Thank you so carefully considering Surrey's requests. This has been a brutal year for so many seniors, and we look forward to neighbors helping neighbors to continue to help this important population." Sue Parker writes, I think there's an attachment here. Yes. "Dear Commissioners, we write as four former presidents of the Board of Directors of the Wayne Senior Center, whose full name is Mainline Senior Services, Inc. We hope this letter will supplement the submission of data, our 2019 audited budget, and our to-date 2020 financial data by our Executive Director, Katie Mann. Our mission statement is plain. It is to provide community, friendship, and resources which enrich the lives of older adults. Many of our members are seniors who have no other source for these essential human needs. Without the center, they would be isolated in the community. This is difficult enough in a normal world, as you might imagine. In a COVID-19 pandemic, life for them is even harder. With the onset of the pandemic last spring, we could have simply closed our doors and laid off our staff. But the needs of our members for community and friendship, and indeed food, would not have gone away. In many respects, those needs have increased. In response, the center's staff developed innovative programs that could be delivered virtually and a food program that required delivery in some cases and pickup in others. To date, that program has distributed over 20,000 meals to those who, without them, might well have done without. This represents a 250% increase in the demand for our meal program. In addition, our virtual programs have brought exercise activities and friendship to many who would otherwise be alone. Many of these programs have been recognized while being on the boundaries of Radnor. While we've increased the number of grant applications we are submitting to independent funders, we have seen those which have funded us in the past reduce their contributions as a result of COVID-19. This renders our support from governmental organizations, the Township and the County Office of Services for the aging even. At your meeting on November 30, 2020, a question was raised as to why the Township supports the nonprofit organizations in its budget. Our answer, had we been there, would have been because this township has always cared for all of its citizens, especially for those less fortunate than most. This is one of the attributes that makes Radnor Township a great place to live and work. We hope that you will continue to provide substantial funding for the operations of the Wayne Senior Center as you have since 1975. Sincerely, Sue Shane Parker, Bruce B. Wilson, Justine Engelhardt, and Charles S. Fraser." Rick Davis writes, "Dear Commissioners, as you consider support for community organizations in the budget, I would ask that you consider the benefit to Radnor residents provided by these organizations. As the Board Chair for Surrey Services, I am proud that we have served the older members of Radnor Township for 40 years. This year, many older adults in the community have needed vital nutrition, mental health, and transportation services, some more than ever, to cope with the pandemic which put them in one of the highest-risk categories in society. While our fiscal centers were closed in March by state order and stay-at-home orders founder seniors isolated even from their own families in many cases, Surrey pivoted within days. We continued our support with grab-and-go and delivered lunches, grocery shopping, critical transportation, and online programming to keep social and mental health connection for Radnor citizens. We are still doing so today. More than 1,700 meals, more than 740 rides provided for medical transport and appointments and other essential errands, and more than 5,000 individual activities, programs, classes, educational and social sessions, center-based, well-open, and virtual since March, were enjoyed by Radnor seniors in the past year. We have seen a 12% increase in services to Radnor residents in the past year, and Surrey Services needs the help of the Township to enable us to continue this support." The older adults who have built Radnor into what it is today need community organizations like Surrey in record numbers now. We share the goal of wanting to have all in our community live with independence and dignity, and with our support, Surrey pledges to continue to do so for older Radnor citizens as we have done for four decades, in old and new ways. With gratitude for your past support and looking forward to continued support, Rick Davis, Chair, Surrey Services Board Directors." That looks like all of the public comment that we have. So, we have a couple of different subcategories to the budget that we are going to be talking about. The first is community organizations, donations, discussion, and direction. So, since I cycled off the deep end last time, I'm going to go first, and then I'd be grateful to hear the comments that the rest of you have. First off, special thanks to Lisa Borowski, who spent a decent amount of time this week talking me off the ledge. She's helped me put some of this in context and kind of organize my thinking in important ways. I will say that I have two distinct concerns, and I think that the first one is more or less resolved, the second one I'm hoping that we can continue to work on next year. The first is our budget for calendar 2020 and how we're going to deal with that in calendar 2021. We missed our numbers from our original budget for 2020 by about $7 million this year, which is a big chunk of our budget, and I am deeply concerned about how we are going to fund that gap. It's been borne in on me, however, that we're not going to fix that gap by saving 10% on our charitable donations, and that this would not be a good way for us to try to reduce that gap. Essentially, we won't make any difference to our own budget, but we will be challenging the groups that provide important services to our residents. That being said, I have another concern, which is that every single year we end up spending more money on these organizations, and over time, for a couple of them, it's been hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have increased our spend. And in that time, almost every year, year over year, we have ended up receiving fewer dollars in taxes, which means that we're spending more on this group while we are receiving less. And while, I suppose we can make it work this year, and in most years able to make it work, the reality is that this is not a sustainable model moving forward. Yes, I would like to go ahead with the initially proposed numbers, is where my head is at now. And I would suggest that we then convene individually with the groups that we support, starting next year in January. We can put together a small group so they're not overwhelmed by seeing seven of us all at the same time or coming to our meetings and getting mobbed by public comment at every single opportunity, and come up with a model where we figure out how much we are able to donate over the course of the next five years, which gives them security in their budgets, and we enter into a programmatic approach to this instead of just picking in December of every year what our donation is going to be, which is not a sustainable for the township and is not a wise model for them, in my opinion. Anyway, I've been talking for a while, so I'd be grateful to the rest of the group to weigh in.
I'll take a turn. I think I'm consistent, hopefully, with what I said last time, which is, I think the numbers in this year's budget. I will be, I am in favor of giving at the level that has been put in the budget this year, and I agree with you, Jack, that we need to have a more, we need to have a better system for moving forward, and I would gladly be a part of that effort after the new year. So, thank you for that.
I think you know I'm totally on board with that. So, and I do agree, you know, it is unsustainable, I think, moving forward in the method that we've been doing it. We tried to streamline some of it with the form that we provided, but I think we probably do need to delve a little more into this with the groups and figure out how we can continue to do this moving forward. So, I agree with you, Jack, and your strategy for this moving forward, and I thank you for listening and working with me and entertaining my, I won't call it temper tantrum, but entertaining my bleeding-heart nonprofit self. So, I appreciate it.
So, I wrote this, and I'll just read what I wrote here. "While I understand that there's some hard decisions to make, I am concerned that the township is the giver of last resort. Unlike the township, almost all these entities that need funding all have investments accounts. The stock market has hit new highs. I think it may have hit a new high today or come close to it. Now, I've heard all about what these nonprofits do, and I don't doubt that they help the community. I know they help the community very much. The township has been asked to make sacrifices, and the taxpayers are making sacrifices as well, with cuts in service, and sometimes they have to pay a little bit more. But the one thing that I haven't heard from everything that was sent to me and what I heard tonight are the sacrifices that these nonprofits are making. I've heard all the good they do, but in a year where sacrifices need to be made, I don't hear that. So, it's not that I'm unsympathetic. I am. But I am here to advocate for the township and really for the residents and their taxpayer dollars. So, I will say that, first, the first thing I'm going to say is, I don't have the answers. I don't have the answers, but I am uncomfortable with these numbers. And if there's ever a year to cut, this would be the year. And we are not being good stewards with the taxpayer dollars. We're just really kicking this can down the road. So, I think that we need to, we need to better evaluate these numbers, but given the same, things aren't the same. Our numbers are down. Our revenues are down. And it's tough. It is tough. But I think that we need to reevaluate this and to keep these numbers the same and to say everybody gets what they want. Again, I don't think it's a, that we as the board are being, we're being fiscally responsible and stewards with the money that we're here to watch over. Those are my comments.
Well, I would say that I heard from several of the nonprofit organizations over this past few days, and I did discuss exactly what was the reduction in expenditures related to lockdowns and fewer people actually in the, in these facilities, and fewer people, people not even allowed to go to these facilities for some portion of the year, and perhaps some portion of 2021. In every case, what I heard, and I hear this at all NGOs as well as governmental organizations, is that everything continued to be spent at the same pace, despite the fact that there were shutdowns, despite the fact that people couldn't go to these facilities. At many times, there was never any reduction in manning. There was never any reduction. There was never any change in the program, except for to shift the program to virtual or to more outreach, but there was never any change. And so, that's the answer to Sean's question. Was there any sacrifice? No, there wasn't. Was there any reduction? No. Was there any savings of? No, there wasn't. And I had found the same thing with the school district too, when I asked the same question. If you're shut down, if kids aren't coming to school, surely you must spend less. And the issue was always the same, which is, no, we didn't spend less. As a matter of fact, it costs more. It costs more when we do more. It costs more when we do less, and there's never anything that can be cut. And I think that that is an untenable governmental stance that continues to be adhered to despite the sufferings of many people in the community, despite many businesses being shut down, despite many people losing their livelihood, their restaurants, their facilities. We haven't, government sacrifices, nothing, nothing at all. And I think that, Jack, what you said is incorrect. A 10% cut while not in any way stemming a $7 million deficit, I'm sorry, in some way it does stem, it is money, so, I mean, it does have some value, but also it's very symbolic, and it makes a point. The symbolism of it is very, very important. And I know that Maura and Lisa are very knowledgeable in these areas. They, to my view, have a sort of bias. This is their business. This is how they, this is what their world that they live in. This is the world that they work in, and they are particularly aware and acute to the issues that surround these entities. But we need to divorce ourselves from that, and we need to think carefully. And organizations that are not part of the delivery of services that aren't benefiting the township and that aren't even in the township, we need to look at very closely. And I think that Jake, he talked to me about an idea he had on this, on how to vote on this, and I hope he brings this up. But we really need to look at this, and just saying, well, we'll leave it like it is this year, and we'll just stick it to all the taxpayers, when a lot of, we know a lot of taxpayers are going to have a higher tax rate this year because we know that the reassessment has affected a lot of properties so that it's more than the revenue-neutral formula would indicate. So, we're going to have a lot of residents that are going to be paying more. We need to be aware of that. We should not just simply say, let's look at it next year. It is kicking the can down the road, and we won't make any change. This is the year to do it, and we should look carefully at each one of these. Wait, wait, before I finish. That being said, I think that two of these are very important, especially. The fire and the library, those are traditional governmental services that are provided. I believe that we save money by having 501(c)(3)'s run these organizations, and I do not believe that if we brought them in-house that it would cost less than what we're doing right now. So, those vital services, I think, need to be retained. The other ones we really should look at, and I recognize the difficulty that all these are having in raising funds this year, but this is something, when our constituents are hurting, when our businesses are shut down, we need to be particularly cognizant of the issues related to simply funding everyone at the same rate that we always
So, if I could interject for just one second. I know there's not a lot of the other organizations on the line here, and, you know, Jill and I jumped on here. But I do want to make it the point so that everybody understands. We really did make a lot of painstaking.
Kristi, I'm sorry. Could you just identify where you're from, and so everyone's aware?
Sure. I'm sorry. It's Kristi Seidel, and I'm the CEO of Surrey Services for Seniors, and Jill Whitcomb is on the line with us as well. But we really did make some painstaking cuts this year that were really, really difficult. We reorganized. We did everything we could to make sure that we were ensuring that we could still provide the services at the most cost-effective way possible. We did our budgeting very different this year, rather than just doing a budget, like everybody always does. You know, you have your budget for the year. We did three different scenarios for our budget. So, that was whether we were shut down the first quarter of our fiscal year, which is July 1, starts July 1, shut down two quarters, shut down three, or shut down all four. So, I just do want to point out that, you know, a lot of us really did take some painstaking, cost-cutting measures.
Can you give an example? Because, I mean, this is what my point is, and I don't doubt it one bit, but you're asking for money. I'm seeing investment accounts. I am seeing that, if I could finish, that you're saying, well, we shut down. So, if you shut down for a quarter, I'm not saying that you need 25% less of your budget. I get it. You got a, you know, there's fixed costs associated with that. But what are some of the variable costs that you've paid, and how have you cut some of your fixed costs? This is all that I have not heard, and that's why I'm saying it's going to be really, really difficult for me to kind of jump on board. And I just want to say, like, I get, I know what you do, and I think it's wonderful. I just need you to justify it, to at least me.
And I think if you look at, you know, we did send over the additional information this week, but I think if you look at it, we did have to unfortunately furlough some employees. We did redeploy people in different directions so that we could make sure that we still provided those essential services. You know, we had to make some hard business decisions. You know, we might be a nonprofit, but we are still running a business, and it was really critical for us to make sure that we were making fiscally sound decisions and fiscally sound, responsible programs and things like that.
Jack, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Was there another line of questioning here with Christine? Somebody else have questions?
I don't think so. You're up.
Okay. So, I'd just like to go on record with regards to the 1501(c)(3) that I am pretty well-versed in, and that is Radnor Fire Company. I'm not here to speak for the other fire companies, but I will reiterate what I said in last Monday night's meeting. A few things. Number one, Radnor Fire Company started with Bob Tate and Bill White in July of this year on this budget discussion, in multiple sit-downs, in a full opening of the books, a full budget process. And those discussions and those meetings continued through the fall. So, you know, it was brought up in last Monday night's meeting by several commissioners that this process, you know, has just kind of got started, and these numbers are kind of new and being thrown up. In fact, they're not, as it relates to Radnor Fire Company. That process started back in the summertime. In addition to that, I think it's important to note that of all the 501(c)(3)'s, the environment that we've been dealing with with COVID is front and center. Day in, day out, 24/7, Radnor Fire Company does not close its doors. It does not do shutdowns. It has been the front line of defense for this community in terms of dealing with COVID-19, and all of the related things that go along with that in terms of protecting community members. In addition to that, it was brought up last week that Aiman had come and met with us and said that some of our numbers were down in the summertime. In fact, if you go to the Radnor Fire Company website, you'll see that those numbers are back to where they have been in previous years. The number of calls has not declined. The number of runs has not declined. Both the EMS and the fireside were right where we have been in past years. So, I think it's important to note that, and while we view that as, the fire company as one of a group of these 501(c)(3)'s, it's important to note that this is the front line of defense in terms of the community. What sacrifices, Commissioner Farhi just asked, you know, what sacrifices are these organizations making? The sacrifices are deep, and they're there every day, 24/7, as I said, in terms of the volunteers and the men and women of Radnor Fire Company that are there. So, sacrifices are front and center at all times. And it's just important to note, I think, that the budget process has been very transparent, and it has been up until really the last couple of years, until that number has started to increase with the drop in volunteerism. So, just important points as we talk about them and the fire company in light of the other 501(c)(3)'s.
Damien, are you done?
I am. Thanks, Jake.
All right. Thanks. And, you know, Damien and I, we may not always agree on the issues, but I think he knows how much respect I have for his volunteerism at the fire company and everything the fire company does. And I agree, as we look at the 501(c)(3)'s, the fire company has to be pulled out of that group. If you have a fire at your house, you're going to expect that somebody shows up. And right now, under COVID circumstances, it's probably going to be a firefighter, a volunteer firefighter that's in the back of the, that showed up your house if there's an emergency. So, you know, as I talk through some of these comments, I do think that they need to be pulled out of this group, and the request that they asked, I would support fully funding that request. The library, as Commissioner Booker mentioned, is another one where I'd be open to having a discussion on the library. They do offer many services to the residents, and, you know, some that are unique and that, you know, that are important for all residents of the township. Now, the other ones on the list, you know, I tend to agree with Commissioner Farhi and Commissioner Booker in their comments that in a year where we're experiencing historic losses, not to have any cuts to our, to these services, you know, it doesn't make sense. We're asking the residents to pay more during these times and to make sacrifices. Everybody needs to make sacrifices. We shouldn't be funding at 100% of last year levels when we're not seeing 100% of revenue. So, the comment was made that this isn't sustainable long-term. Well, if we know it's not sustainable long-term, why is it okay to do for one year? You know, we need to take a closer look at these numbers, and there needs to be some reductions. The second point, or the next point, and I've said this before, is to me, we shouldn't be funding services that are outside Radnor Township. And, you know, what's, I mean, there are a lot of services. There are a lot of not-for-profits that help out Radnor residents that aren't in the township. So, are we going to allow and say every organization that serves Radnor residents should submit a request next year? Because I can think of a couple. You know, Berwyn Fire, they respond to a lot of Radnor residents' calls. Should they put in requests for support in our budget? So, our budget is supposed to be helping, you know, the organizations within Radnor, and we've got to draw a line somewhere, and we should. So, in my mind, you know, that first line has to be, they have to be Radnor organizations. In my understanding, I could be wrong, that we, the beginning of funding Surrey Services was because they used to be, their location was here in Radnor Township. their location was here in Radnor Township. Well, that's since left. So again, you know, is our, is our policy going to be that we fund every organization that supports Radnor residents? And I think that's, you know, not only not sustainable, it's not, you know, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be stewards of the taxpayer dollars because not every taxpayer would support funding those organizations. So I would like to pull that specific line out and have, and have a specific discussion on that organization just to see what the sense of the board is, whether that particular service will be funded in this year's budget. Because, you know, those residents that get services outside the township, they, there's four other organizations on there. The Wayne Senior Center, the Wayne Art Center, the library, and I might be missing one, but you know, they, you know, they, they offer similar services to those residents. So, you know, I'd like, I'd like to hear on that specific line item where the board stands.
Commissioner Abel, let me just ask you one question. Are you saying that we should not be funding Brumall Fire or Bryn Mawr Fire?
No, I think we should. I said, I said, I think, I said, I, I said, I take fire companies out of this equation.
Because you talked about Berwyn, so that's why.
Yeah, well, my, I'm, I'm.
You're talking about Surrey Services.
Yeah, but to Commissioner Farhi's point, seeing this list, I mean, everybody should be making requests to Radnor.
Okay, so the question is put, what is the board's appetite to continue funding Surrey Services? I will tell you that certainly for next year, my position is going to be that the township can really only move forward funding organizations that fulfill traditionally municipal roles. I'm frankly not convinced that Surrey Services fits into that category. I think that they do a wonderful service. I think that we will be poorer without them if we ever are, and I would like to find a way to ensure that they are fully funded. But at the end of the day, this isn't my money that I'm giving away. It is taxpayer dollars, and if we're using it for non-municipal services, I have concerns and ethical problems with that. The library, the fire companies squarely fit within that role. I think the senior center is in the penumbra of that role. Whether we're going to move forward with them this year, I'll be honest with you, that's not the hill that I want to die on in either direction. However, I will say that I am generally concerned about having this conversation on December 7th, which is my fault, I'm the president, I set the agenda. But I'm concerned about essentially having led organizations to believe that they are going to get the grants that they have traditionally gotten from the township, then pulling the rug out from under them at the 11th hour at literally the end of calendar 2020, because we're having the discussion when we are now. That being said, like, like I led with, Surrey Services is not what I would consider to be a quasi municipal function. But they do not fulfill a quasi municipal function, and as I said, this is not the hill that I want to die on.
So that being said, you know, if anybody has any specific questions, and I do understand your concerns, but I do want to point out that we are very different than Wayne Senior Center and the Wayne Art Center and things like that. Because the services we provide to Radnor Township residents, cleaning up their yards, helping them rebuild their kitchens, working with COSA, providing transportation to medical appointments, all those things are things that are unique to Surrey.
Are there any specific commissioner questions for Ms. Seidel? I want on the under, on the one hand, to make sure that we take advantage of her knowledge and expertise while we have her. And on the other hand, I don't want this to be just a free for all.
I mean, I'll just say something, and it's not to kind of go after you, Jack. I, I understand and that we may have led some of these nonprofits down a road that's undesirable, I'll say at best. But I think that while, you know, while, while we do have to represent the township in that way, our main representation is that of the taxpayer. So I, so I think that it's an uncomfortable situation. It's not particularly, it's just a bad situation all around. But given the choice, that's kind of, of, of where I am when it comes, comes to this. I just, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I think some cuts need to be made. But to just, just to say, yep, we're going to fund it because we didn't do the work. Again, it is kicking the can down the road. It sets a bad precedent. I don't think it makes the board look good. And it, this is a very, 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 very difficult decision. We're affecting people's lives and everything. But again, I don't have the answer. I just know that I was elected to, you know, to, to keep people safe. And I think making sure that people are eating is, and have heat is, is part of that. But also to be a steward of the township and the taxpayer dollars. So I am in a very gray area as far as any questions that I have to, sorry, I did ask it. But again, I apologize, I don't want to keep beating this dead horse, so to speak, but that's kind of where I'm at.
President Larkin, you know, I'm not saying that we shouldn't support not-for-profits. But, but my position is we should be supporting them at a level comparative to what we see in our, in our revenue projections. And I also disagree with the notion that we've led anybody on or that we're late in the game. You know, I can pull up the videos from last year where my, my comments are very much the same. And that we discussed very similar topics last year to, to, to be implemented this year. And, you know, I would think you, all the, all the 501(c)(3)'s that we fund saw those videos, they were in the, in the audience for some of those. And knowing what, what the environment is, the current environment is that, you know, there, I'm assuming they had discussions on, you know, what, what if Radnor decides not to fund us at full levels as they indicated they might during these discussions last year? So I don't think anyone's unprepared for this. It's just the fact that we're having this discussion in, in December. But, but, you know, it was going to have, you know, it was going to happen regardless.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I've had conversations with a couple of different 501(c)'s in the township on this in the past week. And I have consistently heard the same thing, which is you can't cut our funding. And my response has consistently been, we're not cutting your funding, or we rather would not be cutting your funding if we were to reduce our contribution over last year. Until we make a gift, one way or the other, at the end of the year, there is no fixed number, which means that you receive what you receive and there's not a cut or an increase. It's just, this is what it's going to be this year. That being said, in as much as I've been saying that until I'm hoarse, I can absolutely promise you that there is an expectation among the nonprofits in the township that they are going to be receiving the numbers that they got last year or something close to it. And while you're absolutely right, you said something very similar last year. I think that I've said similar things in the past as well. That expectation is there, and we basically now are going to make the decision, do we want services to be cut at the library? Do we want services to be cut at Surrey Services? Do we want services to be cut at the fire company and my house burns down? Because they just don't get there quickly enough. Which is why I think that the conversation needs to be a longer one and a more detailed one starting in January next day, next year, instead of in December of this year, where we decide what we're going to be going, moving forward, what we're going to be doing moving forward. But like I said, Surrey Services, the Historical Society, those are two groups that I do not see the same moral obligation on the part of the township to fund as we have for the library and the fire company. And to some extent, the senior center, just because they're not traditional municipal purposes. Lisa, I'm sorry, I've been talking for too long.
That's all right, I just am raising my hand so I can get in the queue. It's all right. So this is a very interesting conversation. I, I think you, you know, you all definitely know where I stand. And, and Rich, I appreciate that you stated, you know, I do live in this world, as has Maura. And it is very difficult for nonprofits, certainly right now, certainly as it is for the township. And, you know, I, I take to heart what you all are saying as we are stewards of the taxpayer dollars and things like that. That is certainly very important. But I, I do agree that, you know, we've had this budget out there since October. We have not had this discussion until last Monday. And, you know, you can say, well, we talked about it last year. Well, we did, then perhaps we should have talked about it in October also, before groups have made their budgets and, and are counting on the funding. The other thing I will ask is, there's a lot of talk about what is technically a municipal service. Is it a municipal service to feed senior citizens who are experiencing significant difficulties based on the downturn of the economy, which is impacting them in one way and, you know, could be impacted in another? Could the township provide these services ourselves at a better cost? I would doubt it. And I would doubt that that's a function that we want to take on as a township either, because we are just not capable of doing that. So when I look at, you know, the senior center and they're serving 1,500 people and the money that we give them, looking at that's about $97 a person that we're providing, you know, food and access to services. Our seniors need a lot of help and support these days. There are not, and, and I believe that we're bridging a gap when it comes to things like that. Or at least the, the senior center is providing that. Surrey Services provides a similar service, and I would argue that in this moment, people need those services now more than ever. And for us to take that money back means that less people will be able to receive those services because of the difficulty in fundraising that exists right now. You know, the, the library is certainly a very valuable service also. You know, I, there, I, I think that there are worthy conversations to be had about the level of funding or the, even the fact that we fund some of these groups. But to have those conversations now, we don't, haven't even really had an opportunity to engage with the groups who are used to getting our funding, whether we like it or not. You know, you heard, I think, the senior center said, we've been funding them since 1975. They are used to receiving our funding. So again, I don't disagree that, you know, we need to have those conversations. But I'm not comfortable deciding that tonight, I'm not comfortable, you know, like Jack, I've had several conversations with some of the nonprofits who we support. But that's just me as one commissioner and Jack as one commissioner. We haven't had those conversations, I think, also in conjunction with, you know, budget projections and things like that. So I would advocate for continuing to fund at the same level and taking the next year to have those conversations for groups to understand that moving forward as a township, it, it is not going to be sustainable for us to just deliver on this funding. Let them put in place as well, you know, some alternatives. I liked Commissioner Mulrooney's suggestion of, you know, perhaps we need to, for some of these groups, it does need to be on a, you know, almost as if it's a grant process. You know, provide the information as to how many people are being helped in the township, provide that information to us. So I think there's a better process than us just sitting here and again, like I said before, taking a scalpel to some of these groups so that we can save, you know, dipping into reserves, which I think is really what we're talking about right now. I don't think that unless we're planning on doing some significant cutting across the board that, you know, it's going to fund a position or it's going to fund, you know, anything long term. I think this could be, you know, a one-time savings. And then, you know, we're going to be looking, you know, right, kind of right back where we started again next year. So I think let's have some real honest conversations. Let's figure out a plan on how we do this. And then move forward from there. And then the groups will really fully understand what the other, what the commissioners have been saying, wrap in what was said last year. And so they have the expectation and can make a plan.
I'll say this, sorry, and I need to stop talking. Bill, what is this discretionary number that we have for fire and Surrey and the library? What is that total number? Do you have that, that number, is it like 3 million or 5 million where it's going to all the fire if we keep it as is?
About 1.2 million.
Well, that's, that's without fire.
Yeah, so the total with fire is just a shade under 2.4 million. Self is 960,000. The sum of the rest is about 235,000.
So I, I have a compromise, I know that this isn't going to happen. But I think that we need to focus on fire, focus on the library, and then take the other issues and not vote on them now. We'll have money left over in the budget. You know, we'll have, I'm just throwing a number, I'll say 960,000. And we can look at that in January, what we give them. I understand that it would be an inconvenience of a couple of weeks. But I just, but to just say, oh, well, we're just going to fund it as usual and then talk about it. It's kicking the can down the road. To withhold that money and figure out the best use of that money and then allocate that money in a month from now when we can talk about it. And we may need to have a meeting with some of these nonprofits, I think is the best uses of the money. So it won't be that we're not funding them, we're just setting, I guess, an earmark of, of, you know, whatever that number is, we'll fund the library, we'll fund the fire, et cetera, et cetera. And then we can look at what's left over and can we fund, I'm just throwing this out, like the senior center or the Historical Society or whatever. So that's where I'm at. But just to say, yep, we're just going to, we're just going to fund everything and talk about it next year. That's what we said last year, we've kicked the can down the road, we've done it very effectively, we'll be doing it again. So whatever that money is, that number, Bill, and I don't have it off the top of my head. If you can kind of just walk through it or put something up on the board, something on Excel, find out what that is, and it may only be 500,000, et cetera. But we need to talk about this. We can't just say, oh, well, we're going to fund it. Thank you.
Shaun, you were saying, take the fire and library off and then the discussions on the, the remainders?
Yeah, essentially, yes. I don't know what they are. So we talk about, yeah, but fire is a necessity. The library, it's important. But I, and it's not that, I don't think Surrey is a necessity. It's just kind of, we need to set tiers of these things. And tier one, which is the fire, we'll definitely fund. Tier two, because it's a life and safety issue. The library may be a tier two because it's important, but it's not necessarily life sustaining. You could argue that Surrey Services is and the senior centers, and that's great. Let's have that conversation later where we can look at some of these numbers. And I don't necessarily know how we do it, but we need to have a better conversation than what we're having now.
All right, the, the comment that was made though, that if you make reductions to some of these requests, that you wouldn't be able to fund a position. I think in, in the budget, what's, what's, what, for 2021, what's the second engineering position? Wasn't that around $60,000?
You talking to me?
Well, Bill.
$45,000 budget figure.
Yeah, we had estimated about 45. I mean, it costs more, but.
So if the, so if the appetite for the board is to hire another position in the township, I mean, making cuts does offset that, that cost.
I think we need to look at these costs first, and then we can look at the internal, which would be hiring new police or hiring. I don't, I mean, I guess you can lump them in, but I think for, for this process, I think that you should just look at what these seven or 10 services are. And then you should look at what, what staff wants. I think they're two separate, two separate items.
I'm not sure, I'm not necessarily, I. I'm not necessarily, I I need to process your suggestion a little bit, Sean, not immediately against it, but. I do think that there are interrelated issues here, and if we are talking about, this is a. A year where we're looking at sacrifices, you know, throughout the community, whether it's a business owner. Or a nonprofit organization. For the record, I work for a private institution, not a nonprofit.
You have done good, good work for nonprofits.
I am, but I have many years. Thank you. And I am curious to see if we can identify a couple of places in the budget where we are sacrificing. I know that we are. Talking about not contributing to the OPEB. But Bill, maybe you can identify one or two places where, you know, we're making a cut. To township services. That, because I do think they're related. If we didn't need to reduce our budget, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So are we reducing it elsewhere or are we relying on the sort of the generous contribution section only in order to make up a little? Which I think is a very small piece of our short. Our shortfall.
Yeah, so I I'll I'll start by, you know, kind of resetting the two thousand twenty one budget conversation in the presentation that we made back in October. When we were putting together the two thousand twenty one budget. We knew that revenues were going to be short for twenty. You know, we we had hoped a little bit that some of those revenues would recover in twenty one. I still think, for the most part, most of us feel that way now. But in light of that, we presented a budget that was kind of holding the line on everything, so. You know, the 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 service levels from all of the township departments, we were holding the line on. And that included the the community organizations and and the numbers that were included in the presentation back on October nineteenth. Showed that, you know, holding those levels at the same amount, so we were trying to be consistent with the community organizations. In the same manner as we were with the township operations. The additional positions we presented in addition to the numbers, so. You, those were areas of. That that we felt were important enough to at least bring to the board as a recommendation to consider. But you ask about various cuts. You know, in terms of just continually continually squeezing down our operating costs in terms of our contracts and supplies. You know, personnel levels for two thousand twenty one are budgeted to be at the same level. We weren't proposing any cuts there. And and I know we had the whole discussion about. Essential services, but like the fire company, Radnor Township and our departments have been operating at full steam this entire year. Regardless of the pandemic, and we will continue to do so, and we'll be continued, expected to continue to do so. Some areas where the township continues to not fund. Is, you know, our capital. We've had this discussion for the same number of years. We've. Struggled with our community organization funding. It's, it's. You know, I, we just didn't even include it in the presentation because we knew it was a nonstarter, so. It it's not even getting the same airtime as as this discussion, but that is a massive. Obligation that's out there for the township. It's something that we we do need to consider going down the road, so. There are areas that we are not funding that were not included in the budget. So it's, they're not cuts per se, but they're they're continual areas where the township is falling behind in terms of our. Infrastructure and assets that are not being replaced.
Have we canceled or referred any projects that we had intended to do in two thousand twenty?
Or for those projects funded through. The. The general revenues, there were a few, some of the bigger ones, like we were gonna redo all the technology in the Radnorshire Room, we pulled that off, we were gonna. Upgrade all of the security cameras around the building at about fifteen grand. We pulled that off. So some of those we pulled out. With regard to the bond projects, those are proceeding full steam ahead. We're actually obligated to spend that money, so. And it's not, that's not saving us on the operating side anyway, so. To the extent we could on any of the discretionary capital projects, we did suspend those or pause those. But most of the money in our capital replacement, even in two thousand twenty, were were vehicle replacements. So those were, those were vehicles that were set to be retired and needed to be replaced anyway.
Okay, we don't have any amendments yet, but we also haven't come to a vote, we're just having a conversation. So we've been through a couple of rounds now. I'm going to suggest we move on to item number three, which is proposed millage rate for board discussion. We don't have a ton of choice about our millage rate. It's required to be revenue neutral. We can move it up by as much as ten percent, but I see absolutely no appetite on the part of this board to do that. So beyond that, is there anything, Bill, that we should be really discussing here?
No, I, hopefully everyone had the opportunity to see the the communication that we sent out last Wednesday on this and then the updated. Ordinance in the packet. We, we did work with John Rice's office to to calculate what revenue neutral looks like. And that's the the two point two eight three seven mills. Again, it's roughly half of what the millage rate had been previously. But just to maybe clarify, with regard to the community organizations and and. There was no tax adjustment being proposed to fund the amounts that were included in the budget, so. I I think there were a couple of comments made that I made notes about that where it was suggested that. You know, residents are paying more. As in, and the conversation was linked to the community organizations, and while a lot of residents will be paying more, that's a function of the reassessment. Not a function of any decision by the board at up to this point. I mean, what? What's in front of you guys as a board tonight is a a revenue neutral number, so the township will not. Be receiving any additional real estate tax dollars as a result of this millage.
Well, Bill, Bill.
Clarification, I think that the comment that was made was more in the context of we don't need to charge as much in taxes as we are. If we were to cut spending in other areas.
Well, Bill, I would, I would only say to that, we we're using general. General reserves to pay for some of these services this year, and that is taxpayer dollars. So residents are paying for these. Community services.
So residents have always paid for the community services. In fact, last year we raised taxes. Not dipping into the general fund or cutting OPEB as was suggested to fund the fire company. Specifically to fund two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the fire company. So that is why we raised taxes last year.
Yeah, so my apologies. I didn't, I didn't mean to reset that conversation. I just, I was trying to make it clear that. What the board is deciding tonight is on a millage rate that will not generate any additional revenue for the township in two thousand twenty one, so there's. There's no tax increase being proposed by the board at this time.
I did actually have a question. There's a ton of appeals that have been. Set by the appeals board, but that are now wending their way through the Court of Common Pleas. It seems like the. It seems like the total aggregate assessment for the township is probably going to fall. And it, at least some of them will probably happen during calendar two thousand twenty one. Are we concerned that we're going to see, get a significant? Gap in revenue as a result of that, or are we just assuming that will all happen in calendar two thousand twenty two?
If so, I'll, I'll let John chime in on the legal side of it, but when we had the conversation about setting the millage rate, that did come up. The 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 timing of when the bills are generated, the bills are mailed out, and then the bills are paid. Is is pretty early in two thousand twenty one, the first quarter for the most part. Not sure how long those appeals will take to get through the process, but. The county, the county actually prints up the real estate tax invoices and mails those out. And that'll be done at the end of December, early January, so. In all likelihood, those appeals will take longer than this collection cycle. And we'll know at some point next year, mid-year, hopefully, or however long it takes. What the, what the real impact would be. When you look at the aggregate assessed value, I think it's going to take a lot of appeals with a lot of downward movement. Movement to materially change our revenue amount. A, because the assessment is so large and the individual appeals may not be as large, and B, because the millage rate. Is, is small enough that it would, it's not going to move the needle much if if. If there are a lot of assessments that move that downward. Unless the amounts are significant, which we don't know as we sit here today.
And Bill, a lot of those assessments, those is appeals, how the school district has filed. A significant amount, correct?
Yes, as I understand it, they have filed a a number of appeals. And I'm, I'm just guessing that those appeals are are. In an upward movement. But John, I don't know if if you want to touch on the the legal process that those appeals might go through and how long those those typically take.
Well, I think it's going to take a long time through. Through next year. You know, a lot of them are residential appeals, so the the numbers are not going to be significant. I don't know. You know, how many large commercial appeals are there are, but. These take a long time to get resolved. I mean, you go to the Board of Assessment, they make a decision, then you have the right to a trial in common police court, which rarely happens. There's a lot of back and forth. There's a lot of posturing on the significant ones, but. It's going to take a while into next year for these to be resolved, and I don't think you can really plan on it one way or the other. School district has appealed assessments that they deemed too low. I don't really know how many of those there are. We get copied on most of the cases that get filed and if there's settlement agreements. Were typically not involved actively. The school district takes the lead. That's been the. The agreement between the township, the county and the school district. County and township are involved because we're taxing entities, but the school district takes the lead. I know the school district's case involving the overall assessment, there was an order issued November thirtieth. Which means if there's a thirty day appeal period now, it's that runs for the school district to take that further. Again, it's, it it goes to county court and the courts are struggling with. Day to day matters. In terms of criminal cases and other types of cases, so. I don't know that Jackie can really say, you know, try to plan for that. I don't know how you do that. But it's out there. I mean, it's out there.
We have to segregate some fraction of funds that are paid to us under protest. It's been a long time since I looked at this.
Yeah, when there's an appeal, there's some money set aside by all the taxing entities. And again, the school district is the, you know, the main taxing entity has the largest number to set aside. And I don't know, Bill, I mean, we set, we must set aside some money at the township level, correct? When there's a tax appeal?
Well, we have not had an appeal large enough in the years I've been here to require that kind of set aside.
Okay.
Tell you fiscally, that always is a good idea. Just, just looking at the numbers really quickly, though, if if the assessment moves by one percent. Now, that's almost just a shade under sixty three million dollars. When you apply that against the millage rate on tonight's ordinance. That would cost the township about a hundred and forty three thousand in revenue, so for every one percent. The the total assessment moves, it's about a hundred and forty three thousand of township, but. Again, that because the the total assessment is large enough. See, I'm not sure if there's sixty three million dollars worth of movement that we'll see all at one time. It may happen over the course of a year or two, but I would imagine there might be, there'll be pluses and minuses in the in the mix of all of that.
Okay, that exhausts my questions. Thank you both.
Hey, Bill, tell me if I, if I, if I have this right, so two thousand twenty numbers. Taxes received through the, through the assessed values was was basically a seventy thirty breakdown resident to. Businesses.
Bear with me just a second. I I have that information pulled up. And you asked twenty twenty, correct?
So, so yeah, prior, prior to this assessment.
Yeah, so about sixty eight percent residential. Commercial's the neck, I mean, there's, there's a little bit in ground, but it's, it's a negligible percentage, so roughly seventy thirty.
So so after assessment, we're, we're at like seventy five, twenty five?
Yeah, so what I don't have from the county is a breakdown of our total new assessment. By the classification of property, so we don't have the residential, commercial, ground. Exempt, all those different classifications yet. We just have an aggregate number. I know that the the estimate they were giving us before, which is. A couple of months old now. Was. Residential was at seventy three percent, so I mean, you're going to be in the ballpark.
Yeah, so, so while, while we're claiming that this is revenue neutral and overall it is, it, this whole process. Was was another increase to the residents. Is that, is that, is that accurate?
Well, on a case by case basis, yeah, I mean, I'll be paying more next year. But it's, I just, it, to be clear, this is not something that the township initiated or.
I didn't say, I didn't say it was.
No, I just, but folks that are watching at home may not have that same level of understanding.
Yeah, and I, but I just also want to make sure people know, like, wh- while we claim it's revenue neutral. I mean, the residents, the residents saw their percentage of that number go up while businesses went down.
Yep.
So, so the residents will be, will be paying more in this process.
As with all the reassessment, yes, residents will be paying more, but the township's revenue will not be going. And to be, to be clear, there are some residents whose numbers are going down.
Yeah, yeah, I I know, I know there's some.
There's movement all over the place and to almost every degree.
Yeah, I think, I think some, some areas in in the sixth ward probably got hit harder than most. So so that's, you know, the, you know, those are, those are the people I've talked to. And. You know, the, I think, i- is there still? The lawsuit in process? Looking at the process or or is that, is is that gone?
Now, that, that is what I said earlier, the, the Board of Assessment. Which is the administrative board where you start an appeal, entered an order on November thirtieth. Found against the school district. So you now have thirty days for the school district and anyone else that wants to participate. In an appeal to file one. So by the end of December, I'm assuming the school district. Will probably appeal that. I don't know that for a fact. We probably, if you want to discuss that, ought to discuss that in executive session. You know, because the township could be a party, the county will be a party, assuming the school district files an appeal.
Well, I think we, we, we discussed this a few meetings ago, and the, the decision was no, if I remember correctly.
I think we said, yes, we would like to support the school board. If there is a specific question, assuming that I'm right about that, if there's a specific question of whether we actually intervene in a case or take an appeal in a case. I think we need to take a separate appeal, but we should discuss that in executive session.
Yep, yep, I, yeah, I didn't want to go down that road, but I just wanted to make sure that we. I had my recollection accurate, but yeah, I think, I think that would be smart to to have that discussion at the next executive session.
And we've been in touch with the school district solicitor. Over the last few days. So that, looking forward between now and the end of the month. Will probably have to schedule something to discuss it, once I get some additional information from the school district solicitor.
Okay, is there any additional comment on the proposed mileage rate for board discussion? Hearing none, we're going to ordinance number 2020 dash 22, adoption, adopting a final comprehensive budget for fiscal year 2021. And establishing the township mileage rate in accordance with the county reassessment. Is there any discussion with the exception of the two issues we've already just covered on anything else in the budget? Okay, I'm going to offer an amendment to the budget then, at the moment, we do not have any of the proposed additional positions included in the budget. I'm going to propose that we amend the budget to include the junior engineer position that was proposed by the engineering department. Is there a second?
A second.
I'll call the vote, let me see if I can move out so I can see all of you at the same time. Okay, I'll call the vote, all in favor of the junior engineering position, say aye. Aye. All against, say nay.
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 Looks like five to two, the amendment carries, are there any other proposed amendments to the budget?
Is that excluding the community, any other amendments other than? The numbers for the community organizations, or do you want people to?
No exclusions, we're now talking about the entire budget and it looks like we're getting ready to pass something, so we need to. Get together a final draft of what that's going to be, there's one amendment, which is we are adding in the engineering position. If there's an amendment with respect to the community groups. Anything else, now's the time.
I would, I would motion to. Cut Surrey services by 30%.
Okay, motion to cut Surrey services by 30%, you said, three zero?
Second.
Okay, that's got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Three, can we get the nays again?
Nay.
Nay.
That was the end.
The nay?
Proposed amendment? The ni-.
No, no, I'm sorry, I was, I was for, I was in favor of the amendment, my my apologies.
Okay, understood, it looks to me. Okay, now I'm confused, all the nays, please hold up your hands and give me a second to count.
Let's do a roll call, Jack, so you.
Okay, I am a yes, I'm going to dispose with yea and nay because they sound the same over this connection, I am a yes. Rich, what are you?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Uh, who's third, Damian, who is you, what are you?
No.
Who is you?
Fourth word, Lisa, what are you?
I'm no, and does everyone know that 30, 30% means $15,000? Just making sure.
Fifth word, Moira, what are you?
No.
Sixth word, Jake, what are you?
Yes.
Um, seventh word, Sean, what are you?
I'm a yea.
Okay, motion passes four to three. Um, okay, are there additional amendments?
What's the status of the of the additional police, didn't we say that those are not included?
At the moment, there are no additional personnel included except for. The engineer that we just discussed, if you want to include the additional police or the GIS position, then we need an amendment.
And what what's the, what's the. Expected salary or expenditure on that second engineering position?
Uh, Bill, do we have a set figure?
Yeah, let me pull it up here real quick.
While Bill is pulling that up, I'll say that it's my hope and it's my expectation as well that we're going to be able to defray a significant fraction of whatever the salary we eventually pay. I resort to the various funds that this person is going to be. Drawing upon, so if you're doing sewer work, you can draw from the sewer fund, if you're doing stormwater work, you can draw from that fund. From developers, if we're doing reviews, then the developers will pay for our engineers' time. And it's very much my hope that this person will be doing in-house engineering work and will be saving money and realizing savings on work that would otherwise have been done out of house. So that being said, Bill, what say you on the number?
Yeah, so the fully loaded expense of the position, we are estimating to be at 120,000, that would be wages and all benefits. And and Jack, as you highlighted, our anticipation is with the upcoming stormwater projects that we have coming down the pike. As well as some potential sanitary sewer ones and then other just. Simple engineering projects that we're currently asking our third-party engineering firms to design for us, this position would do those. And the expenses of. Would be paid out of those funds, as you accurately pointed out, so we had that estimated at about 75,000. I think Steve mentioned last Monday that that equates to about five projects. That seems pretty realistic for, you know, the the aggregate of the stormwater, sanitary and general projects that we can. Realistically install in a given year.
So, Bill, Bill, in the budget, in the budget, is there a line item then for what you have proposed in terms of third-party? Engineer consultants that would have otherwise used that, you used up those funds?
Yeah, so in the, in the engineering department operating statement in the budget, there are a series of contracted service expense lines. There's one called contracted services special. And when you look at it, you could see in 2017, we spent just under 179,000 in that account. For 2018, it was 146,000 and and those are costs going to our third-party engineering firms for. All sorts of different things that we ask them to look into and design and report back to us on.
Is there a propose, is there a proposal for 2021?
Yeah, so for 21, we knocked that budget down to 50. With some anticipation that. You know, there, there's always a project here or there that's going to be outside the scope that this one individual is going to have the expertise to to weigh in on, say. Traffic or something very specific stormwater wise, so we wanted to keep some amount in the budget. But we did pull that line item back significantly, again, in anticipation that. This person's cost is going to be, is going to offset or be consumed in payroll instead of by third party.
Okay, so so I would like to offer an amendment that then that we cap that line item at 50,000. And if we are to go over, that has to come to the board for a vote.
There's an amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye, and raise your hands and hold them up for a second. Okay, all in favor, say nay, all against, say nay. Motion fails five to two. Are there any additional amendments? Hearing none, is there any staff comment?
No further staff comment from my perspective.
Okay, we do have some public comments, so give me a moment and I will call that up. Assuming I'm able to. Okay, from Kathy Henderson. Thank you for the opportunity to express my support for the continued funding of Surrey Services by Radnor Township. Now more than ever, Surrey Services need this, needs this support to continue providing critical services to the older adults in our community. Older adults are some of the most affected by the pandemic, they're socially isolated and are frequently impacted by food insecurity. Older adults in our community know they can rely on Surrey Services for a nutritious meal. The opportunity to remain active and engaged through daily virtual programming. Secure a needed ride to a doctor's appointment or the grocery store, or hear a caring voice through a friendly phone call. I would like to share two recent stories to show the impact Surrey Services had on Radnor residents. I have changed the names of the community members to respect their dignity and privacy. I received this email from Bob, Radnor resident, hi Kathy, the latest from Surrey says you know how to get people set up to use Zoom. Numerous others have tried for me and failed, Zoom does not like me, but I wish. With Zoom, I could do so much, including Surrey programs. That day, we successfully remotely downloaded Zoom onto his iPad, did a practice Zoom with him, and he is now up and running. He has joined our caregiver support group, attends various health and wellness Zoom programs, and looks forward to getting his weekly activity e-blast. Shortly after COVID, the manager at the Surrey Devon Center for Healthy Living received a phone call from a woman in Florida who was concerned about her friend of hers living in Radnor Township, Wayne. Mary was recovering from surgery, which had taken place just before the shutdown. Between her age and compromised immune system, she was very limited in what she could do for herself. She did not leave her house, had no family, and was unable to cook for herself or to get groceries delivered due to the overwhelming demand. Alerted to the woman's plight, Surrey made contact with her and immediately began delivering fresh meals five days a week, plus enough shelf-stable food to last the weekend. We continued providing meals for three months along with puzzles, notes, and other diversions in her lunch bag until she notified us that she had recovered enough to take care of herself. And also to to have food delivered. During the three months, we also grocery shopped for her and called her on a regular basis as a friendly check-in. Please help support Surrey Services to continue our mission of inspiring and enabling us all. As we age, to live with independence and dignity and as engaged members of the community, Kathy Henderson, Director of Community Services, Delaware County. Mary Gallagher writes to the esteemed members of the Radnor Board of Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to tell you about some of the specific instances in which your financial support of Surrey Services for seniors has helped Radnor residents. All too often, those of us who work with older adults find that the people most in need are unwilling to ask for or accept assistance because they feel embarrassed. I am showing these stories, rather than asking the people involved to tell them, to protect the privacy and dignity of the people involved. Kathy and Ed recently moved to Wayne from Long Island, Kathy is recovering from a stroke and her physical therapist at Bryn Mawr Rehab recommended that she become a member of Surrey's fitness center. To maintain the progress she has made in her recovery. With the fitness center closed due to COVID-19, Kathy is taking our live Zoom fitness classes. She particularly enjoys the personal and small group evidence-based programs such as Tai Chi, which are proven to increase balance, flexibility and strength. The timing of a move, a stroke, and then the isolation of COVID has made it difficult for Kathy and Edward to make friends in their new town. We recently invited them to try our grab and go lunches during the drive-through Halloween party on Friday, October 30, and Kathy said, you made my day. They are both now enjoying our hot nutritious grab and go lunches, the social programs we offer through grab and go, such as art puzzles, book loan and games. And our weekly activity e-blasts. This past August, we received a call at our Devon Center from a Radnor resident who had a house fire which destroyed her kitchen. She and her husband in their 70s are at home alone all day. A neighbor who is a member of Surrey recommended that Margaret call Surrey, and we immediately arranged for them to be added to our grabbing the lunch program. We also offered shelf-stable groceries and other assistance to help them. Although they are not Surrey members, we are happy to help them and will continue to make sure that they have free hot meals and shelf-stable food during the long process of getting their house repaired and their kitchen functioning again. Anne is a longtime Radnor Township resident who's been living alone since her husband died. She does not have internet or a smartphone, so she is especially isolated. She is anxious that she will forget to turn her stove off, so she no longer heats meals for herself. Everything she eats is cold, she lives on a limited income and the food that she makes for herself is usually from a can and not nutritionally balanced. When Surrey staff learned about her circumstance and offered her hot grab and go lunches, she initially declined because there are people who are worse off than I am. She feared she, that receiving meals meant that she was keeping hot food from someone who might not have any food at all. Surrey now delivers hot lunches to Anne, and our staff use the delivery to do a wellness check and provide Anne an opportunity to talk. To another person at a safe masked distance. In her thank you note, she calls us her angels. I could easily share dozens more stories to illustrate the time Surrey has provided Radnor residents with a meal programs and emotional support. Based upon the increase in phone calls we have been receiving over the last nine months, the need for our services is greater than ever and growing. The coming months will be especially difficult. I truly appreciate your past support of Surrey Services, respectfully ask that you renew your commitment to meeting the needs of Radnor Township's older residents. It has never been needed as much as now, best regards, Mary Gallagher. George Ammon writes, dear Township Commissioners, my name is George Ammon. And I served as a township commissioner from 1988 to 1992, and again later in the 1990s. My wife Ellen and I moved from Radnor to the Newtown Square area in 2014, but have maintained our interest in Radnor. Ellen served on the board of the Wayne Senior Center for several years. We were quite distressed to hear that the township is considering reducing the level of its support for the senior center for the year 2021. We are not users of the center at present, but we are contributors to it, and we believe strongly in the importance of its work. The center continues to operate virtually and provides crucial support for those who are designated as the most vulnerable. This includes numerous online programs and advisory services. Most important, the center's volunteers deliver packaged meals to approximately 75 seniors each week. This enables vulnerable people to stay in their homes and away from stores, thus reducing their risk of contracting the virus. Also, some of the recipients may be on limited income, hunger has become a serious problem even in this area. We learned recently that the Chester County Food Bank recently has been unable to obtain and distribute all the food requested from it. Please find another place to make cuts in expenses rather than hurting the senior citizens, but thanks for your consideration, George and Ellen Ammon. Jill Whitcomb writes, I just want to thank all the commissioners for your past support and your very thoughtful discussion this evening, I appreciate you letting us be a part of it. While our physical centers are closed, we are serving more older adults every day, and their needs are increasing every day that this pandemic goes on. If we can answer any additional questions for you, please do not hesitate to reach out to us, with gratitude, Jill. That concludes our public comment on the budget. Okay, unless there's any last minute amendments, I'm going to call the vote. Going, going. Gone, okay, all in favor of ordinance number 2020 dash 22, the township budget for calendar 2021. As amended, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion passes five to two. Uh, moving on to ordinance number 2020 dash 23, adoption, establishing the township's sanitary sewer rate for 2021 as 785 per 1,000 gallons of water. Is there any commissioner comment?
Just to refresh everybody, we're not moving that up at all, staying the same.
That is correct, that's the same rate as it was this year, 2020.
These are tough times, so to keep that the same, knock on wood, it's a warm winter, we don't have any major breaks, I'm okay with it, I'll be voting for it.
Is there any staff comment?
Nope, just going to confirm that it was the same rate as prior year.
Okay, there seems to be no public comment, so I will call the vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to ordinance number 2020 dash 24, adoption, amending chapter 162 of the Township Code by adopting the consolidated fee schedule for calendar year 2021. Is there any commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? I see no public comment, so I'll call the vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We are moving now to item seven, our final public participation. And once again, I see no additional public comment. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
I'm moved, second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, nay, motion passes.